I would like to call this Monday, November 20th, 2017, regular session of the Somerset School Board to order at 7:02 PM. We will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance and Stan. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Asia, could you please take local?
Brian Walton.
Here.
Katie Thurman.
Here.
Marie Colbein.
Here.
Nancy Dressel.
Here.
Courtney Kerkowski.
Bob Dunbar.
Teddy Shakar.
Here.
Our district mission is together we engage, educate, and empower all learners, bridging their passions to pathways to create successful futures and positively contribute to our local and global communities. Our core values are we believe each and every person is capable of success, we believe each and every person is accepted and valued, we believe in empowering all learners, we believe change is our opportunity for growth, we believe in involved communities that foster strong schools, we believe lifelong learning is essential to personal growth, and we believe in cultivating learners. Fellow board members, item number 1E has our protocols, please review them. We're now on to item 1F, which is approval of our agenda. Is anyone willing to make that motion?
Oh.
Thank you, Patty. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Bob. Any questions or discussion about the agenda? All those in favor of approving the agenda as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
All those against, please say nay. Motion passes unanimously, six to zero. We are now on to item 2A of our agenda, the superintendent's report.
Thank you. A few items here, some of these I'll give you a little insight to, and they'll be agenda items for our work session coming up in December. But first of all, today they conducted the onsite interviews for the OCR complaint that we had filed against us, and actually it was done by telephone, but the interviewees were here in the boardroom with our attorney. And so that's in process now. Let's see, the report cards are to be unembargoed, I don't know if there's a better word for that, does un embargoed as of tomorrow. So we will send out to you everything we have relating to those, and then at the December 4th work session, we'll have a presentation from the building principals, what it means in the building, and then from the district level. So you'll have that information ahead of time, so you can digest it and line up your questions, or if you have questions that time, let me know, so we can know that we can get answered at that work session. On a personnel matter here, we have, you know, every year when we go through the cycle of contracts and what have you, people have to sign letters of agreement, and we have a group of paraprofessionals that haven't signed theirs stating that they don't have a current handbook. And we operate on the premise of continuing contract, until changes are made to a new handbook, the past handbook is enforced. The problem with, you know, you think that, you know, maybe it doesn't matter if they sign it or not, well, it does, because all of a sudden now by saying that they don't want to sign their new letter of agreement, takes them outside of the handbook, and we can't, that can happen. So checking with our legal resources on that, if they want to continue not to sign their letter of agreement, we'll go back and, you know, everyone got a 2% raise, we'll have to go back and go back to their original contract also. So I'm just saying this right now, so you think about that, and we can have some discussion on the next work session on how we want to handle it. On one hand, it's, you think it could be a simple thing, but there's more strings to this if they don't sign their letter of agreement, because basically they're working outside the contract.
I don't understand why, because there is a supervisor's handbook.
It's, pardon?
There is a handbook.
I know, there is, but it's just, they're wondering, because there's not a new handbook, and we're working on that right now. So again, working with, on the grounds of continuing contract, you know, everything that's in place now, or has been, will continue until a new handbook is put over, and there's a work process of that. So now I just received a couple of emails, and I'm going to have to have a face-to-face, I'll just say, you know, here's the options here, otherwise we're going to have to go back to their original contract and recamp the money that, because we're paying on a new contract.
Well, and I would say that whether they sign the contract or not, their handbook is still in effect.
It is.
So.
Is that supervisory or paraprofessional?
Again, I just wanted to lay that out there, and we'll talk about it, and we may have it resolved by then, but just so you have a heads up.
How is their employment valid if they're outside of their contract? Just curious.
Well, again, we're operating in good faith that it's continuing contract, you know, I've never had this before, but I guess we'll find that out. That's, because the problem is, you know, we can't have them working outside the contract because you just can't do that, and they have to agree to the terms and conditions. That's what I was agreeing with today, so, I am back full time.
Is there a date by which they have to sign? And if there isn't, are they automatically, is it in the policy where they?
There isn't, they, you know, this is just the end of it, they're just kind of cleaning everything up from the, you know, from the wages and what have you, it was in September, we're just kind of going through the process, and now this is floating to service, hey, we don't have these signatures.
So then if there is no signature, is there somewhere in the clause or in the policy or somewhere that it says if they don't sign by a certain date that we can take that as they've done, except if they can't get their note from you?
Yeah, I believe that's probably what it'll come down to, but I want to actually talk face-to-face with you. Again, I don't like the email thing, but that's the way it's been treated so far, so I'll have more for you before the work session, and again, it may be resolved by then.
Let's hope.
We have a, let's see, there's a budget adjustment, and this is on the work session next week, that we have an insurance claim from that hailstorm that came through this summer, and it was about $180,000 claim. And one of the biggest issues was the greenhouse got severely damaged, and that's been, I think it's repaired now, and it was about a $15,000 to $20,000 repair. However, the other pieces that were damaged is, we've gone through this, we've checked it out, it's all cosmetic superficial kind of tin work up on the roofs. So it's nothing performance-wise that affects our operation, so we don't have to repair it. I mean, there's no liability if we don't, the thing is just it's documented that if we have another storm, you know, we can't claim it again. So, so what to do with that money? Basically, it's going to be a budget amendment, it'll come in as revenue, and then it's, you know, it'll, part of that will patch, you know, that deficit spending we have, which is, you know, the whole scope of things is not that great. But there's a couple of things that you can do with that, and a couple of things I would recommend is we get this place wired up for video, like we talked about before, and the other piece is looking to use that money on strategic plan initiatives as they come. Because there's certain pieces that we have of the strategic plan, that are going to cost them dollars, and so we just tuck that away for that, and then use it as such. And again, just want to lay that out there, it's on the agenda for the work session, so you can think about that a little bit. In that next, in that work session, we do have buildings and grounds with their budget presentation, as we go through the budgeting cycle and process, they're up next week also, so it'll tie right in. And so it's just a little food for thought. We do need a letter of support, and I talked to Nancy about this, for, we're going to make our third attempt at the grant for the fab lab with matching funds, and we tried twice before and we haven't received it, so we'll craft a letter, and then Nancy will have to sign that, as just our commitment, if we do receive the matching funds, that we'll perform on it. I think it can be up to a $25,000 grant, but again, we haven't gotten a sniff the last couple of years, so, let's see, where that's at. Let's see here. Tomorrow I'm meeting with bus drivers to talk about, actually, I'm going to walk them through our strategic plan, just how it was crafted, and what it means to us, and how we're dealing with that, and, you know, it's always nice to have your vendors on board. And, you know, these people are the first ones to see our kids in the morning, the last ones to see them at night, and it's very important that we're all on the same page. The middle school is doing a book study on Lost and Found, which is a whole different concept of how we treat students that are having challenges. It kind of goes with the philosophy of punish, or discipline to correct behavior rather than punish, which is an angle or a philosophy that we're trying to implement. You know, in the past, it's just kid does something wrong, let's just deal with the behavior and kick the kid out. Now it's, okay, you got the behavior here, but let's focus on what caused that behavior. I've always been on this kick for a long time, and it's the whole concept again of disciplining to correct behavior, which takes the, what's good for all out of the picture, now it's each and every. Because to correct behavior, you have to look at the cause, and, you know, your discipline may not be the same for everyone, because everyone comes to us with different issues. But it's important for us to get the bus drivers on board, they're a first line of offense and defense, you know, kids get on that bus in the morning, how they greet people, it's like our secretaries in our buildings, you know, how are they, when people walk in, what's our image? When these kids get on the bus, you have the kids crying, having a bad start to the day, somehow there's got to be a pathway where that bus driver can contact the principal or whatever, and say, hey, here's what I'm noticing, you know, we can have someone greet that kid at the door, and maybe we can save the kid's day. But it's that philosophy of working together and creating that pathway, and so I'm going to talk to them a lot about that tomorrow, and working together as a team. And it all starts with the strategic plan, you know, those core values and missions, so. Let's see, what else we got cooking here? I'm out of rhythm here, you know, it's weak laying in a reclining chair, it isn't good for the thought process, although I'm getting caught up in all my soap operas. I guess the last thing I have, I get Bob Dunbar's resignation tonight, so after the meeting, this will be Bob's last meeting, and, you know, we do have a policy for going of vacancy, and as of tomorrow, we will open this up, whatever media outlets we have access to, we'll get it in the paper, but we'll, through our network electronically, get it out, anything that you folks can do to recruit or what have you, but it's basically, we'll take 10 days, and December 4th, our next work session, this is on the agenda also, that we'll gather whatever names, so what a person has to do is they have to turn in a letter of interest to the district administrator, myself, so they can either mail it, or they can bring it in, and if they would like, they can also schedule time, we can sit down, I don't know exactly what they're in for, they might take their letter back or not, I don't know. But at least give them a little insight into what's happening in the process. Now, this is only for five months, or till the general election in April, that you will get to choose who sits in Bob's seat. And then at the general election, you know, our notice of election that goes out will post the three three-year terms, and then a two-year term, which will be the remainder of Bob's seat, and the fourth vote getter in the general election will get that two-year seat. So, did I forget anything?
No, just that we need to think about what dates we might be available for interviews.
We will have all the names by that December 4th, that will be 10 business days at our next work session. So, again, on the agenda, we'll have that, and depending on how many, you can decide what type of format you would like. You may have two, you may have 22, and by our policy, you have to interview everyone. And it can be as simple as, why do you want to be on, and what are your qualifications? I mean, you can, or you could do a type of forum also, if you have five or six, you can wall it at one time, and have kind of a moderated discussion, something that gives you a picture of who these individuals are, so you can make a decision, but that's all up to you. And I will facilitate whatever you need, but right now, the big thing is getting it out tomorrow, and getting awareness of the position.
So would we do that in a special, or do it in a, or in a form?
It could be either, and we might want to determine that based on how many applicants there are. So, I'm wondering from board members if Monday, December 11th, is a date that we're available, if we need a longer time slot. Otherwise, Monday, December 18th is our regular session, so if it's a smaller group, we could potentially start early that evening.
And we can build an agenda around that too, if we know we're going to need an hour or two hours, we'll keep a real tight agenda, and just put things off to a different meeting. Unless, you know, if you have a large amount, you may want to think of doing like a Saturday morning, or a Saturday afternoon, or something just, you know, to accommodate, because people are taking off of work and what have you, too, so, you can do it anyway.
It'd be wonderful if we have a large amount, we would encourage it, and run again in April.
So, that's all I have, but Bob, I want to thank you, just for my last year and a half. Appreciate it. Thanks. That's all I have.
Thank you. I'd also like to say thank you, Bob, you've had a decade of really important leadership as a board member, as a board president, you've had some other roles too, and I really appreciate that opportunity to work with you.
I have too, I was hoping you'd change. I sent me out of Stan, and respect you for you.
Yeah, thanks, yeah. As things move on with work and the new position there, so it's going to be a lot of time.
So you leave on the general field.
Always now.
Before the Kool-Aid, I might drink it.
Thank you for your report, Mark. The next item on our agenda is financial reports. Board members, did you have any questions about that? Then we will move ahead to school board member reports. I don't believe there's been a briefing Somerset meeting since our last meeting. Marie, do you have any updates from CISA 11?
Actually, I've got a few of them. Let's see, I'm wondering if the people are aware, if they work within the school of the loan forgiveness, I don't know how that's put out there, but if you work for the school district, there's potential for loan forgiveness on your student loans, for new student teachers, so I'm wondering if there's a way of letting them know that, or actually for any public, any state office. That to me was a new one, I did not know that, I talked to Chris, and she did know that, so some people are aware of it, I'm just wanting to put it out there. They were offering potentially buying group purchasing of some software if the school has a need, you've probably heard about that in your superintendent's meetings, and I thought that was.
I never finished the last meeting I went to.
That's right, that was one of the proposals that they did bring up. They have come up with a plan for, with the shortage of substitute teachers, they are, CISA 11 is putting together a training, a two-day training, so that districts can utilize them for that necessary training, cost of approximately, I think it was $230, and either the school could, after they have proven to be valuable asset that we would want to continue to, could potentially help with that cost, or instead, they pay that cost upfront because it makes them available to any of the districts around. So they're really trying to address the need of substitute teachers. He stressed that we need to remember the benefit to having good relationships with our private schools, and in particular with St. Anne's here and other home schools, because those actually can be feeders to our schools, and sometimes we maybe don't remember that, or we might not think of that, and it's absolutely true. Spring elections filing, this was a new one for me. We, and it actually was a new law that went into effect this year, so we, none of us are in air yet, but we all are required to file a form on campaign finance, an exemption from filing campaign finance reports, meaning even though I'm not running, I have to file again, and I said, what? He said, yeah, it changed this year. So, please look into that, and maybe Tasia, you would not, I don't like putting more in, like you have one already, but if we're all in need of that same form, if you wanted to send that out as an email to us, I sure would appreciate it. So it's the exemption from filing campaign finance reports, and we all have to file. Normally, it used to be just those running. Let's see. I'm wondering, there's a screening, I think, to pick up kids with special needs in Somerset, and we don't have any administrative to ask, but.
Yeah, it's a child.
So I'm thinking we've got that covered, they were wondering how that's addressed.
Our school psychs work on that.
And it must work too with the screening that they do, the three and four-year-olds, to pick up those that might need it sooner than enrolling in school, that's pre-K. Some of the schools, the last thing we talked about was some of the schools are actually hiring their own mental health therapists, with emphasis on mental health, and are finding that hiring their own was actually a cheaper and more quick response, or more personable or more personal, excuse me, for their school situations, rather than working through the county or the insurance, and I thought, you know, that does make sense, so, one more thing to consider. For us, I think, well.
We do have. Co-located.
We have a service provider here, but there's more schools looking into it. I thought, I didn't know if we actually hire her in the district, I thought we were just contracting through her, so it was two different ways.
Yeah, I think we provide.
The space.
Access.
Some of those, yeah, and some are doing it that way, and some are actually hiring.
It was beneficial for them also.
Yeah. It is definitely, I'm sure it is. I think that's it.
Thank you. Thank you. Ms. Shakar, do you have any updates on community education?
So I contacted Renee Chapek, and she said that they have Community Education Advisory Committee, only once or twice a year, they're still working on the catalog, she's got some good collaborations coming up, Training Room, Happy Place, Health Partners, Youth Boards, the library, they're hoping to have a winter walking program at the school, right now hoping to have the catalog out in the middle of mid-January, but it's not, still in pencil right now, so, it's processing. But it's coming together.
Thank you.
Catalog mid-January, that's good. That's wild.
Mm-hmm. Katie, do you have any updates on the employee council?
No, we are meeting a week from tomorrow, or second, and we're kind of assuming we're just going to go up from where we left off.
Yeah.
The first one.
Yeah, I'll come up with an agenda, I've got everything on my wall in there, so, I'll get that up.
And then, since we've kind of skipped over human resource audit, I thought maybe it would be this, you could say it now.
Yeah, well, really, it's just in process, they're doing their self-evaluations of their positions right now, and so they're just starting.
Their job descriptions.
Right, they're just starting to come into the supervisors now, so that's where we're at. And I haven't touched base, well, last week I haven't touched base with the draft at all, I know, you know, they sent all requests for the wage study. So, you know what I know.
I attended the Memorial Scholarship Fund Committee meeting this month, they're working on updating the organization and layout of their application, and that should be going out soon. Exciting opportunity this year that they collaborated with the English teachers to share the essay application questions, so students have actually had the opportunity to work on it in their English classes. And they're very excited that they have had the opportunity to expand their 50/50 raffle to the play this past weekend, so they've had great involvement with that during the three performances, so they're just continuing to fundraise, and applications will be out soon.
One of the things that I noticed at the scholarship committee, and I, when I asked them about it, John is the one, John Walsh is the one who encouraged them to be the ones who did the tickets at the same time, it used to be parents of the kids that were involved did it, which is really good to get parents involved too, but their involvement with selling the tickets and doing the raffle has helped on both sides, so, it's a plus in both ways, and it really has increased the people that are actually seeing where their dollars are going, and also getting the involvement, or getting buy-in, people buying tickets, just on Friday night, I think it was a pot of 153, 158, something like that.
The next item on this list is a WESB delegate, Bob had previously served as our board's representative to that, and we do have the state convention coming up soon in January, so we will need a replacement for, at the conference in particular. I know I'm planning to attend, is anyone else planning to attend? Any other board members planning to go in January? I don't know, do you know if Courtney was planning? I'll tell you.
No idea.
Patty, you want me to talk it?
Yeah, let them all go on.
I can do that, because you're already presenting, so if it's all right, I'll serve as a delegate at the convention this year?
Agreed.
All right. And there any other things that board members would like to share in the board member reports?
Just one, and Catherine, I didn't realize you were part of this, you might want to share, do you want to?
Sure.
Later. This, just, what this packet is, is about the Somerset Public Library and their group, what an excellent packet, so I brought this for you, no, actually, my mother dropped off with another one, I was, she was directed to give it to me to bring it to the school board, and lucky for me, she's here tonight, so, she'll do a much better job, but I think this is excellent.
Well, the purpose of it is, I'm Catherine Cranston, by the way, for people who go home to me, and I happen to be helping Rita with this, raising money to build an addition on the library. And this is just the packet that is going to be going out with people, the ones that we're going to ask for money later on. And we're just asking all kinds of people across the community to read it carefully, see if we missed anything, there's a frequently asked questions in here, and there's also a packet in here that's just called the case for support, because we wanted all village board members, we wanted school board members, we want everybody that is at all in a position where a public person might, a taxpayer might say, what's the deal with this library? You then have read this and can say, here's why we need it, here's what's happening. And so we're asking for people to read it, and then maybe send back a little questionnaire telling us if we missed anything or not. And this is, this is Dr. Beesley's reading.
So, do I get two of them, or?
That is, so you're going to give him that?
Yep, yep, that one was for school board members to look at.
Or to you, and then you could maybe scan it in and send it out to each other?
So it's, we really want your opinion on if it's written well, and is it going to answer people's questions.
There's a paragraph in there that, I'm sorry. One paragraph that's really, I appreciated, well, I appreciated all the information, to me, it was really well done. Instead regarding libraries as obsolete, people need to understand public libraries promote and highlight communities to employ in real truth. A library is a symbol that a community believes in and has a commitment to lifelong learning. That to me said a lot. I just think that's so true. I, I, I just think that's so true. So to be a part of it, I think is great. Thanks for coming to share some of that tonight. And I know that's not why, you came, you came just to see us, right?
Thank you for sharing that. That's a wonderful opportunity for us to collaborate within our community. Any other updates? Then we have our student representative reports. We might need to refresh.
Did you just link it right here?
Oh.
Well, to be honest, it's been a very uneventful month at the high school. But we did find a few things to talk about.
Okay, so if you guys didn't go to the show this weekend, we had Fiddler on the Roof.
Fabulous.
And it was awesome. I went on Friday night. Zed Rivard was the lead character and he has an amazing voice. Same with Eve Goldstein. She's somewhere in here. I don't know where she is. She was the female lead role. They were both really great. So it's a good show.
I'm a part of the College and Schools American History class and this month we did, we went and toured the U of M and it was a really good experience for all of us to get a feel of the campus. And I talked about the resources we can take advantage of there, such as their online library, which is, I think, the largest in the nation. So that's a huge advantage to us and was a really good learning opportunity.
Something that is new to the high school this year is something called Genius Hour. On Wednesdays we have, I think classes are like five minutes shorter or something. And then we have a long homeroom at the end of the day, which is called Genius Hour, where kids can participate in activities in different rooms around the school. There's things like ACT prep, chess club, film club, leadership, foods from around the world, food trucks, scholarship and application course, men's chorus, volunteering and some other stuff. So here's some people working on robotics. This is the chess club. And it's kind of just somewhere for kids to like cool off and, you know, work on things that they think they might enjoy doing in their future. We have the Veterans Day program. Was it last Friday? Yep. And here were a bunch of veterans that came. We had a couple people speak. They read poems or did big speeches. The choir sang, the band played. So this is just a really cool way of honoring our veterans.
This is our school store at the high school. If you've been down there to check it out, it's really an awesome thing that the entrepreneurship class that Ms. Sutton teaches. It really helps students learn where they, what field of interest they want to go into. And there's store managers who run the store, run the stores in the morning. And then there's like also other workers within it, but they sell great apparel like that picture you see there. There's probably five kids a day that are wearing the same shirt at school. But yeah, it's really just a fun way to show off your school spirit. This is the leadership field trip we did with the entrepreneur class and the accounting classes that Ms. Sutton teaches. We went first to a lunch at The Wire of Robin, which is a business that was started by Somerset alumni Wheezy Stout. And she gave us kind of the rundown of how her business was started and different things there. And then also there, when we were eating lunch, there's a woman who started a bank and she kind of ran us through some different finance things and her college experience and such. And then after, we went to a wild game. And there we, there was probably a group of 50 other kids along with us. And there was four people from the Excel Energy Center who told us where they came from and such. There was a media specialist, the director of the Excel Energy Center, an accountant and one other position at the X. So that was really fun.
Here's a couple other things. We have started doing Character Ed on Thursdays during our homeroom time. We do a bunch of different activities, but it's all focused around the question of what's your why at Somerset? Which kind of gets kids thinking about like everything we talk about with our core values and the strategic plan and stuff. So we do just kind of character building activities.
Yep. And then we started our community mentoring program the second week in October, I think. And that's a really good experience for all students. We, I personally am with a small business owner and we sat down, really got to know each other. And we meet once a month. I think Patty is a part of this. And it's a really good way for kids to get an understanding of what road they need to take to be what they want to do.
NHS started tutoring on Tuesdays during homeroom. I'm part of NHS, so we have kids who are struggling in like, say, a math class or an English class and they can come to the library and we'll help them out with whatever assignment they're working on. So I always help the same girl and she will even like come up to me in the hallway and be like, Emma, can you come help me with math today? Like outside of tutoring, so it's really cool.
We had the WITC Career Fair. There was a group of 25 students that went and they really just got a feel of what WITC has to offer and ran them through financially wise, what they'd be looking at if they went to WITC.
We have been planning Polar Days. Student Council has been planning Polar Days, which is, if you don't know, it's kind of like a winter homecoming. So this year though, we're going to kind of expand it a little bit. We're thinking of doing a Sadie Hawkins dance, lunch activities, dress up days, T-shirts for every class and maybe more. So we'll get you more information later.
And then winter sports have kicked off. The girls' basketball team had their first game and they unfortunately lost.
JV won.
Yeah, JV won, so that's, that's good. And the Dance Line performed there. And the first basket, yeah, the first boys' basketball game is tomorrow against Montaubie. So that'll be a good game. And we have a lot of kids out for wrestling this year, so that's enough. I think the numbers have doubled.
And I think cheer is starting to compete too. I don't know how you guys have been doing, but.
They competed last, well, week and a half ago and our middle school team placed third and our varsity placed second.
Congratulations.
I think that's it.
Can I ask a couple questions?
Yeah.
Just which one? College and the schools, you were mentioning that you have access to the universities. Is that only for students that are enrolled in the college and the schools?
Yeah.
But I took it last year and I believe I can still go on. Yep.
Well, that is great. And then I see your sweatshirt. Does that mean that's where you're going?
I have two, two choices. It's this or McAllister.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, so we'll see. Yeah.
The play was phenomenal. Even, they had fantastic voices, the two leads, but there were a lot of great plays.
Everyone was really good.
And the choreography, what a treat.
So good.
Thanks, you guys. Great job.
Thank you.
We are on to the open forum portion of our agenda. I have not yet received any cards of anyone interested in speaking this evening. Is there anyone interested in speaking during the open forum? Hearing none, we will move on to the next item, which is our, any items related to educational delivery and learner connectedness, which this evening we do not have any. So we now can progress to item five, which is services and facilities. And tonight we have some policies up for review. So the first one is 5A1, which is the definitions policy. We have a recommendation that the school board approve Policy 100, Definitions as Presented. Is anyone willing to make that motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Katie. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Marie. Any questions or discussion about the definitions policy? No questions? All right. All those in favor of approving Policy one, or 0100, Definitions as Presented, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say nay. Motion passes unanimously six to zero. The next item is a recommendation for the school board to approve Policy 0167.3, Public Participation at School Board Meetings as Presented.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Marie. Is there a second?
I'm second.
Thank you, Katie. Any questions or discussion on this one? I was wondering the third paragraph for consistency, do we want to add a work session in there also?
I thought that was changed, didn't we? But yes, I would like it in there.
So you're saying comments that are regular, special and work session?
I just like that so much that you can just get that changed right in there.
So there were, was just the word and work session added into the third paragraph. We all have the opportunity to read it on our screens as presented.
Do you want to squeeze in a session after that?
Yes. Any other questions or discussion on that policy?
Maybe to move meeting and.
Meeting needs an S after that.
Oh, yeah. Bunch of English majors. Somerset Education. All right. Hearing no further questions or discussion. All those in favor of approving Policy 0167.3, Public Participation at School Boards, at school board meetings as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those against, please say nay. Motion passes unanimously six to zero. Item 5A3 is a recommendation that the school board approve Policy 1460, Physical Examination as Presented. Is anyone willing to make that motion?
Make that motion.
Thank you, Brian. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thanks, Patty. Any questions or discussion on this policy?
Okay, I thought I recalled that we were going to, Mark was going to get some feedback on kind of the do's and don'ts. Who our physician was.
Who our provider was.
Well, no, not just the provider, but the guidelines on who you send.
For the drug testing portion of it?
I do remember the conversation.
Yeah.
I didn't, so if you want to hold this one over.
Well, we can always edit it. But keep asking.
No, I just, I.
Well, I don't want to pass it. As if we don't have to go through it.
We don't have to pass it. I mean, we just tabled this one until, you know, we've got three others that we're working on also, so that's no problem. I just, in lieu of everything, that just over here. I thought I didn't have enough hospital time to check up.
We, well, we had a whole discussion about it.
Yeah.
At the first reading.
Right.
Both about, Mark was going to be talking to the district, district attorney to find out some of the legalities of who you have going for what kind of testing, because there was some caution in here as well.
I think it was with drug testing.
Yeah.
So I think the second paragraph of it.
I do not mind going back and listening to our discussion and putting it and writing it all to you, Mark.
Would you?
Yeah.
Would you, would you go through my notes? I just totally didn't even think of it.
Given our discussion, Brian, would you be comfortable modifying your motion to table this?
Sure.
And Patty, would you be comfortable making that modification also? So all those in favor of tabling Policy 1460, Physical Examinations until our December work session, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
All those against, please say nay. So the motion passes unanimously six to zero and we will add that item to our December work session. The last policy to look at is a recommendation that the school board approve Policy 7540.01, Technology Privacy as Presented. Is anyone willing to make that motion?
I'll move.
Thanks, Katie. Is there a second?
I'll second you.
Thank you, Brian. Any questions or discussion on this policy? I do recall that we had discussed the need to bring forward the board policy pertaining to technology use and to review it for alignment with the updates on this one. Were there any other questions or discussion on this one?
I just questioned the word. It refers to the board's property. And I'm sure it's fine, but.
Which paragraph is that in?
On the very top.
It says that in the bottom paragraph.
I'm sorry, the second paragraph. First sentence. It refers to a couple of additional times. Perhaps it's fine. It's rather a few times. It used to work. It'd be better if it was district property.
I agree.
They're all under your supervision, guys, but change up, that's okay. District. Districts. It's where it says the board's district. The board retains the right to access information. I don't know that. Board, who's that? I'll have to look at the meeting.
So in the middle of that second paragraph, change it to district as well?
In, in which one, right there, the connection with the, yes.
And also in the fifth paragraph. Board on, would be district on technology.
First line. Personal messages via district on. The board retains the right to access information, that's the third paragraph, that is.
And in the last paragraph also, property of the board, I think should.
Yep, it's a district.
Tasia, could you represent the second line, so boards, computers and services?
Second line? Second line?
Yeah.
First paragraph, last line. To protect the district's interests.
Yes.
Sixth paragraph, second line. Necessary to determine that the district's interests have been helped most. Sixth paragraph. Starts with district technology resources.
Okay.
Second to last line.
Okay. The sentence above that, review that for it.
End of that second sentence. There you go.
So just by doing a Ctrl F to search where the word board shows up in this particular policy, it's still in the first line, saying the board of education recognizes its staff members' rights to privacy in their personal lives. Then it's also in the second line, this policy serves to enforce staff members of the board's position. And then in the second paragraph, in the second sentence. It says the board retains the right to access and review all information resources as defined by law or in by law zero, one, zero, zero. So are those all three places that the board feels the word the board is appropriate?
Yeah. I just felt there was some clues in that.
Makes it clear.
Yeah, for sure. Thank you. So during our discussion, we've had some updates that we changed some of the spots that refer to the board to the district. And we've reviewed where the board remains within the policy in those three places. So we have a motion on the table to approve policy seven, five, four, zero point zero one, technology privacy as presented, including the updates that were made and are visible on our screens. All those in favor of approving that, please say aye.
Aye.
All those against, please say nay. And the motion passes unanimously six to zero. So we now have a presentation from Wold Architects.
If I could just tee this one off here, this is in regards to our advanced services and operations portion of the strategic plan, where we have to, where we're gonna start looking at a facility, a needs assessment and a facility assessment. To find out what we have, what kind of shape it's in, and then also what do we need, what do we feel we need to educate tomorrow's partners? So assuming that somewhere in the next one, two, three years, we're gonna have to do some upgrades to facilities, we want to make sure we've got a systemic plan that addresses all the needs and prioritize them. This is the very beginning of that process, which again is, it's results one and two under that section, under Dave's guise as far as facilities. And I've asked a couple people from Wold Architects, who I've had a long, longstanding relationship, to help give an idea of what the process is from today to if we do do something, here's the keys. So we get an idea of what path we want to walk down, because again, in our strategic plan, these are a couple pieces, these assessments are on for this year, and we need to find someone to do those. And I have this on the agenda for the work session also, so whatever follow-up questions would have you, we can discuss about how we want to proceed after the next board session. So Vaughn, I'll just let you take it from here.
And we have a presentation, I'll try and pull up, or you'll pull it up for me?
I can.
Pull it up for me. There we go. Excellent. So, thanks for having us here. My name's Von Der, so I'm one of the partners at Wold Architects and Engineers. Have Eric Lanier with as well, and I'm glad that the students went first, so I see how to do this. Just forward, correct? So, at least I thought it did. Get the plus down there. Well, just make it bigger.
Oh, so because this is a PDF, we just scroll, so just highlight that on the screen.
Perfect. So I thought what we talked about tonight, just based on what Mark asked, is we'll talk a little bit about who we are, why we do this, our approach for building a long-range plan, which is really the meat of how do you get from, we think we need to do something to, it's doing it, how to pass a referendum, what experience we've had with that, a little bit about project implementation, and answering the questions you had. So with that, who we are. So we're Wold Architects and Engineers. We actually started in nineteen sixty-eight, and I've noticed there's a plaque in your middle school that we did that in nineteen seventy-five, so apparently we've got some past history with the district. We're right downtown St. Paul, and we specialize in a few different business sectors, but E-12 education, public education is our biggest core competency in terms of what we do. It's all that I work on in the firm. We have in-house engineers, we have mechanical, electrical engineers as part of our team, and really believe in education and sort of that core value. We also have offices in Illinois, and Iowa, and Colorado, and Minnesota, and so offices all over the place, but our biggest office is out of St. Paul, which is where we're located. As I mentioned, I'm one of the partners at Wold. I started in nineteen ninety-four, I believe, with the company. Eric, you started in?
Nineteen eighty-six.
Okay, so Eric's been there a little bit longer than I have. My dad was a teacher, so that's why I decided I wanted to be involved in education. I like Somerset because it's halfway between where I live in St. Paul and my cabin in Amory. I've got an annoying neighbor across the bay from me, Mark, living across the bay from our cabin, so I have to see him.
Well, I guess your time's just about up.
We, and as far as the rest of our team goes, Eric and I work together on a lot of different things. Educational planning, Eric gives more project management and getting things done. Anything you want to say about yourself?
Vaughn started out working for me back when we did New Prague High School, so now I work for him.
And that's where we first met Mark, too, is at the mechanical school at New Prague High School, while we were building there. We've got a number of other people that are involved in the process, so we've got a number of consultants that we have long-term relationships with, so anything that really needs to be studied in the buildings, we've got the people to do it. We're somewhere between two hundred and ten, two hundred and fifteen people right now. We're actually the fifth largest educational firm in the U.S., so we've got a lot of experience all over when it comes to working on schools. We work with over sixty school districts just in Minnesota and Wisconsin alone. We've worked on over a hundred school districts all over the upper Midwest, and in the last five years, we've been responsible for about one point five billion dollars worth of school construction. So a lot of experience doing different projects, which helps us understand lots of different ways of doing things, and more importantly, how different communities see things. There's no such thing as a cookie cutter school for us, everything's unique and customized in terms of how we look at the process as we go through. We do new construction, it's obviously a big part of what people think of when they think of architecture, it's all a nice, new shiny building, but most of what we do is actually additions and renovations on buildings. If you think about the building stock and what's out there, that's the assets that people have, and so we spend a lot of time thinking about how can we make what's been in place for a number of years function to meet today's needs. And more important than that, and this is what a lot of firms ignore, is physical maintenance work. Deferred maintenance is a huge part of what we do. It's not glamorous at all, but roofs and tuck point and flooring replacement and mechanical systems, keeping the temperatures normal, dealing with those types of things is a big part of what we do, it's a big part of where we start studying, and then needs evolve from those basic points. And so we know that that's really important in terms of keeping things right. I like hearing about your core values, because that's also a big thing that we believe in in our firm. We have a saying, why before what? And we always talk about why we do things, and why we got involved in this business, and that really guides a lot of what we do in terms of thinking about education, always putting students first and foremost, thinking about why you want to go through this process, not the pictures that you take at the end of the project, but how it's going to function, how it's going to work. And so our beliefs are here, and I'm kind of going through this a little quickly, because I know you've got a long meeting here, and this presentation's available for you, so you can take a look at this afterwards, and if you have any questions in the presentation, feel free to stop me, too, I tend to roll as I get going. So let's talk a little bit about our approach when it comes to long-range planning, because I think that's sort of the biggest thing that we can help define for you tonight, and we can go on from there. When you're getting started, the first thing we always ask is, well, what does your community want in support? Because that's really, there's preconceptions out there, and people might think that there's nothing wrong with the schools. A lot of people never set foot in the schools. They drive by, they see it from the road, your grounds crew does a great job, and people think looking great, so they might think, well, there's nothing wrong with the schools. But it's got to fit into what your community sensibilities are, and so we'll start from that standpoint, and that gives us an idea of, well, how much education do we need to do? How much do people know there's issues? Is there a hot button topic that's brewing in terms of what's out there? In terms of master planning, there's really a basic outline that we follow, but we customize it again to every community that we're going into, and so you have to start with facts. We spend a lot of time gathering facts upfront and establishing those facts, and then agreeing on the need before you move into options, before you start figuring out what those solutions are. We never start with, oh, it's going to be an addition onto the building of this many square feet, because we don't know what that is. Matter of fact, that's where most master plans fall into trouble, is that they jump right to solutions. And we always go through needs to the point where people start saying, I thought you were architects, aren't you gonna draw a picture at some point here? But no, we're defining criteria and really getting agreement on that need, and pausing the study and saying, is this everything that we're going to look at? You mentioned the, have we missed anything in the library study? That's really what we're talking about here, is did we cover everything that you think you want to study? Is there anything else that we need to look at before we start talking about what those options look like? Because if you can get down to that point, you don't end up with three or four or five options, you really end up with one or two good options that meet all that criteria, and you can also figure out, how can we cover more criteria with options and solutions in terms of what we're going through? So you don't start chasing lots of different areas. We don't vote on things, we reach consensus on things, which means people agree and move forward. They say, well, I kind of want to say this, but the rest of the group is over here, they listened to what I wanted to say, and I feel like if that's where the group wants to go, I'm willing to move forward there. So we spend a lot of our time facilitating before we ever get down into that recommendation part to the study. In terms of data, there's, there's two different sides to data. There's very objective black and white data, and then there's the subjective emotional data. And so physical conditions, that's the biggest part, and here, just going to talk a little bit about how we would approach a facility analysis, in terms of getting a comprehensive understanding of all the physical parts of the building, so that even if you didn't address any educational needs and just said, I just want to fix the assets we have, what would those be? How do you start to prioritize that, and how do you get what that number looks like?
So I brought along a copy of the report, I'm gonna leave it with you, and you can pass it around and look at it. It's one that we did for the New Prague School District, and it was originally done in two thousand nine, and they decided they wanted to go through a long-range planning effort in two thousand fourteen, so we took the report back, met with them again, updated the report, and then a referendum happened. We just finished all the projects in the referendum this summer, and the building's and grounds director called me up and said, Eric, I'd like to update our report, I want a ten-year plan, to see what we have left to do. So then we went in, took the same report, took all the stuff we completed with the referendum out of the report, and updated some new things, and now they are using that for their ten-year plan. So it's kind of a living document. It is gonna help them along, you know, for the next ten years or so on. So it is set up by building, and then we have a number of categories for each building, exterior stuff, interior stuff, accessibility, mechanical systems, electrical systems. And so we always list what the issue is, and then we always put an analysis of what the solution is and what the cost for that solution is. So leave that with you, and you can look at it and pass it around.
In terms of the size of that district, that's a one high school, one middle school, three elementary school district, and then they had a community ed building that had some different program functions. So six buildings as part of the district. We've done different sized studies. Another one that we developed in terms of a facility analysis approach is more of what we call an inventory database. So whereas these are static items, where you study it, you look at it and say, this is the price to do it in this given year, we have a database that looks at every single room, every single surface, and it categorizes it into a database, puts a life cycle to it, and you can document those changes, and it'll tell you automatically, well, you're twenty when your flooring's up, this is when it comes to do on that report, and you can adjust and modify that. Those work well for really large districts where they have to do two and ten-year annual planning, and they really are working on millions of dollars annually. I'm not sure if that's appropriate for what we're looking at here. This type of study usually gets at what the issues are, it addresses what the needs are in the community, and as Eric said, we can update it whenever we need to, to make sure that we're going back, so after you implement projects, you update it in the database that way. So that's really where a lot of districts start, is physical conditions, and then from there, there's other data like capacity and enrollment. We can figure out what the capacities are for the building and look at your enrollment projections. We can look at how the buildings are being utilized, which becomes more important at the secondary level, where you've got students moving around from room to room, and the numbers might not always be the same. I can look at demographics and what's expected, especially with the new bridge, I would imagine that you're probably looking at a lot of, what a house building look like, how is that going to impact your enrollment? Are people going to be building here? Are they going to be moving in Richmond to build? How does that start to work with what that traffic pattern looks like? We can do security analysis and audit, security's a big topic in schools. Look at energy performance, look at size of other districts, so that's all on the black and white side. This is where we start to get into debate as to, well, how much of an issue is in the subjective pieces? How well do the buildings work for what you want to teach in and how you want to teach for the future? What's the functional fit for the buildings? Does you move through, does it track from building to building? Is one building of a smaller capacity, which means it feels tight compared to things as you move forward? How do you organize your grades, and is that the right way to do it? How does it fit in with your strategic alignment? A lot of master planning is actually driven by starting new strategic alignment decisions, and then looking at how do the buildings match that? What are your quality standards? And what does the community support? So collecting data versus discussing data and analyzing it really sets the stage for gathering that data component. So in terms of where we'd be there, that's up here, gathering the data and establishing the facts. Now, this is a rough outline, so if you said, well, how many meetings are we talking about as we build this with a community group? Say we had our community group together, and they were gonna take it from start to finish, one group. Meeting one would probably be kickoff and dealing with perceptions. Meeting two is usually analyzing the data, we call it a data dump. We present everything that we've been looking at, so people can ask questions, they take home information and look at it. Meeting three is starting to agree on what the needs are. What are we gonna resolve, writing criteria around that, so that we're resolving that criteria, and we can always change the criteria and add to it, but criteria also helps us guide in our options. So if you don't get someone saying, well, what if we just, you know, built another school over there, can we do that? Well, that doesn't match any of the criteria we talked about. Your criteria was this, this, and this. Do you want to change the criteria? Yeah, actually, I think we should change the criteria. Great, let's change that then. So the criteria is flexible. But that starts to get us into preliminary options around meeting four. We continue to develop those options, going back and forth to the criteria at meeting five. By meeting six, we usually have a finalized approach. It might take longer than that, it might be shorter than that, but that's if we're going through with one group from start to finish. It always ends with their recommendation to the board in terms of, this is what we studied, this is what we were believed to happen. Very rarely do we see boards reject that public community input in terms of what their recommendation is. I can give you an example, one that just did, Winona, and that referendum just went down in flames because the board rejected what the community came to it for. So if you're gonna take this as your community process, I'd strongly recommend you be prepared for it. This is what the community is coming to you with. Now, that's a simple plan. This is a more complicated version of that same plan, which this is for low-trust districts. I don't know where you are with your community trust in the district, but we developed this one for the district I grew up in, which was Princeton over in Minnesota. And they had failed a couple referenda, tried to run a couple of really high referenda, and didn't really get the community input and opinion. And we knew, people were saying, well, you didn't listen to us about this, you didn't listen to us about that. So all of those physical conditions and criteria things, we set up separate committees for each one of these things. So we just had one group that studied physical conditions, we had one group that studied the sites, we had one group that looked at enrollment, and each one of these committees was about fifteen to twenty people involved with it. So by the time we just got through criteria needs, we already had over a hundred people in the community involved in weighing in and going through this, so that, oh, then we had a community meeting, so we can present that, and we had the whole community comment said, did we miss anything? Then we put together an options committee that was formed from different people of each of those original committees, plus anybody else that wanted to join. That was probably about fifty to sixty people. They came up with options, we again had a community meeting, so the community weighed in. Then we went to a finance committee, not a board finance committee, but a community finance committee, to say, is this right tolerance for what the referendum looked like? And the board also reviewed it, and if either one of them said no, it went back to the options committee, which it did one time, and said, the finance committee says your price is too high, they want you to be under thirty million dollars. And the options committee had to adjust where they were. Finally, it went forward to the board with another community meeting. So this was all about, how many voices can we get to the table, so that when we got to the end, nobody said, this is the first I'm hearing of this, you're completely surprising me, and nobody else has said, you didn't ask my opinion. So this is a much more complicated version of what So this is a much more complicated version of what low trust looks like. And we've done things everywhere in between. My son goes to Roseville schools, and we did a version of this where we had just three criteria committees to study it, but they had almost 200 people involved as it went through, and that referendum just passed three to one. And that was $145 million. So it works to go through and build that community trust as you, as you work on this. Our referendum planning experience, we've got lots of things that we can do for that campaign, but the number one thing is that the more people we get involved with this community process and studying it, and they hear it along the way, so it's, it's in their head and in their ears, that builds that support as you go forward. A lot of our vote yes groups actually form from those long-range planning committees that we work with as we move through. There's really, there's two sides to a referendum. And you'd like to think that people are rational, and that they're gonna look at facts, and they're gonna say, I've read the facts, I'm gonna vote on that. But it's not. It's all over in the emotion side. And it's about getting your vote yes groups mobilized, it's about finding the vote. And we've seen a big shift over the last few years, too, in terms of negative campaigning, which is really, it's an ugly business now as you go forward. And so, we actually developed something we call a captain strategy. And so, let's say you need 3,000 votes. Rather than go out and put lawn signs up and do phone banks and do all the door knocking, and all those other things that are face-to-face confrontational, we said, with most referenda, if you can get the parents to vote for it, that'll support your referendum. So how do we get to 3,000 votes? We get our 30 strongest voices in the community and say, you guys are gonna be the captains. And what you have to do is, each one of you is gonna go find 10 people to be your lieutenants. And their job as the 10 people is, they have to go find 10 more votes themselves. 30 people, 10 captains or 10 lieutenants, they go find 10 each, that's 3,000 votes right there. We track the names, we go through, and all they have to do is make sure that their 10 people go vote yes on vote day. And even if they don't get to that number, it starts talking with the people they know are gonna support schools. It's peer-to-peer, it's neighbors, it's the people you know are gonna vote yes, and all you have to do is get them to go vote yes. Voter turnout's not that high, and this works really, really well for making sure that people are coming out. It supports social media campaigns, it does other things that are a lot less confrontational than what we've seen in terms of elections. So that was something that we worked on to develop, how can we help get the word out? We've got proven success. We've, over 50 successful referenda in the last 10 years, and it keeps growing. We just passed seven out of the nine that we ran in Minnesota in November, 11 of them so far. We've got a marketing team in-house that helps with graphics and communication that we can have as resources. We've done everything from helping set up websites, putting together mailers, to graphics and little infographics. So lots of things we can bring to the table to help with that. And then, as we go through afterwards, and Mark has said, talk a little bit about how you go from referendum passing to projects. So a little on project implementation, not a whole lot here. Same thing that we have in terms of process for helping pass it. We think that's what makes projects successful as you go through. It's not about what we do with the projects, it's about getting ownership and voices and decisions.
So we'd like to talk to the users in the buildings, I'm gonna go through planning, to make sure that light switchers are in the right spot, and we have the right cabinets, and right amount of drawers and doors in the cabinets, and sinks where they want them and those kind of things. Because when, when we finish the building and, and the teachers come in and occupy it, nobody wants, you know, to hear complaints about things. So the more we can meet with them and get their ownership early in the project, the more successful the project's gonna be for all of us.
Start with big picture ideas with the core planning groups, lots of different stakeholders. Get into the details with teachers, make sure everything's written down and documented, meeting minutes, graphic ways for people to understand it, 3D drawings for people to know what they're gonna look at in their room. And then, as we go through construction and documentation, again, we know that you can change order down. It is a huge part of this, making sure the documents are thorough. And so, there's nobody better at doing that than Eric, in terms of how we go through and meet those standards.
And we have, you know, existing buildings we're working in, we're into, the known quantity of what's there. So send teams out to look at it, document it, make sure it gets in the drawings. We talked a little bit about user groups already. Phasing's a huge deal in schools when it's occupied. Making sure that we don't have contractors interfacing with students and figuring out how we can do the work and get it done and, and keep school functioning and kids safe. And then, one of the things I really like to do is sit down with the district and talk about what your, what your goals are, what your standards are, to make sure that we get all that stuff into documents. So, your final product is, is what you really want.
Or if you don't have district standards in place, we've helped districts write district standards, so that we get down into, what's an efficient way to do this? Nothing worse than having 20 different types of lights that I have to keep all the pictures for, or having autonomous paint selection in every building, so every teacher wants to paint her room a different color. So we've helped develop, not just, it's one color white, we've got a catalog of colors that say, you've got some accent colors, you've got some neutral colors that you can pick from, but it starts to get you down into a kit of parts that you can work with, as opposed to everything's completely random as you go through.
Even, you know, let's have one key in the building and have the same brand locks everywhere.
Schedule and budget, critical for making sure projects go successfully. We adhere to milestone schedules as we go through. We do a lot of cost estimating as we're moving through to make sure that we're tracking to the budget. We're not over-promising on things as we move forward. A lot of different steps that we take in that regard, as well as quality control, both during the design phase and the construction phase, that we're constantly looking and making checking in. When we set up our fees for a project, they're fixed fees from the beginning. We take a look at what we believe the estimated construction value is, and that's where we set our fee. It doesn't change, which means it doesn't matter how many meetings we go to, it doesn't matter what we have to do or how many times we come back to an area. It doesn't limit us in terms of what those services are. The only way that would change would be, say, we're putting an auditorium addition on the building, and you said, as long as you're doing that, the cafeteria needs renovating, too. Then we talk about, well, that wasn't part of the scope, so let's take a look at this. But that fixed fee approach really helps limit surprises as you go forward. You don't have extra costs. You don't have to worry about those things. And honestly, for most of the districts that we work with, because they're repeat districts, we don't want people to worry about, well, I don't wanna know if I wanna call WOLD, if that's gonna start the meter running. If it's planning types of things, that's not a cost. That's what we do in terms of advice and giving help and supporting it. Before we'd ever do a project, we'd agree on, what is the project and what's the fee, and is everybody comfortable? Great, we're moving forward. So you don't have those surprise expenses that come along with it. And that's really all I brought with, other than a final piece on why I think we'd be a good fit. Just in listening to how you've been talking about things tonight, and how you look at your core values, it's the same types of things that we look at and what we do. We're very, very committed to education. As I said, that's all I focus on. We really, really believe in a strong experience. It is not about the buildings for us. We know that at the end of doing a project, you're gonna have buildings that you like and you're gonna be very proud of, but it's not about us taking the picture. What we want is for people to talk about, oh, when we did the building, we did this, and this is what we wanna do in design, and they own those decisions. And that's really what makes them successful as you go forward. I don't know if anybody's had a chance to go to St. Clair Central and look at some of the recent work that we did there, but when you go talk to them, they're probably not even gonna remember WOLD, the users in the building. They talked about what they did with their spaces, and that's what we want in terms of the outcome as we go forward. And we know how to gain credibility with the community, and how to help the community own those decisions as they go forward and be successful in referendums. So I think we could help them. That's what we brought with tonight to talk about. I think there's one other slide. Oh yeah, if you have any questions. If you have any questions, this would be a good time to ask.
That's good to hear about St. Clair Central. I know I've talked to quite a few people from central who are really pleased with the process that they went through, with their auditorium and expansion that they did there.
So we do have this on the agenda for the work session to discuss where do we go from here? But I wanted you to get a snapshot of where this, these results, you know, from our strategic plan are headed, and the next steps in achieving those results.
Just in terms of doing a facility analysis, if that's something that you wanted to have done? A lot of times, we do them in the summer, because it's easier for us to walk through the buildings. If we were to do it right now, we'd have to figure out how to do it without disrupting education as we go through in the day. That probably takes about a month and a half to go through and document everything, look at the costs and the price. In the meantime, we can also be collecting some other information. To go through a community-driven process from the time you have a community, or a committee formed and taking into those meetings, we usually go about every other week on the meetings, because that gives enough time for us to prepare options, to bring back information. So if we run six meetings at every other week, that's gonna be about a two- to three-month process as you go through. And then, from the time they make recommendations to the board, most boards typically like a month or so to discuss things. If we're gonna go back and ask the committee to develop any more information. And then, planning a referendum, setting it, moving it forward, usually is about a three-month process from when you decide as a board, we're going to do this, to organizing the vote yes group and getting a campaign running and running through. So, all in all, it's about a six-to-nine-month process on a typical long-range plan, from studying the data all the way through running a referendum.
I did walk a couple of the buildings last week, and your facilities are in good shape. Didn't notice a lot of stuff that was a real problem, although I think I want a shop teacher to grab me and ask if we could rip out a corridor so you could expand his classroom. I didn't say yes, so.
And in the meantime, if you have any questions, sir, and then Mark.
Thank you.
Thank you for having me.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Thanks, guys. Yeah, thanks.
All right, so the next item on our agenda, number six, is community engagement and collaboration. That's strategy. We don't have any items under that this evening, so we can move on to item seven, our seek, cultivate, and develop learners.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We just have one item under that this evening, and that would be the goals for the Board of Education that we have been working on, begin with our retreats this summer. I did switch, put the timeline below the strategies on the document itself, since that appeared to be a little confusing. So you'll notice that change. But other than that, it is what we looked at the last time. So we have a recommendation that the school board approve the 2017-19 Board of Education goal as presented. Is anyone willing to make that motion?
So moved.
Thanks, Katie. Is there a second?
One second.
Thanks, Patty. Any other questions or discussion on this goal plan? All right. All those in favor of approving the 2017-19 Board of Education goal as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
All those against, say nay. Motion passes unanimously, six to zero. Then, the next thing that we have on our agenda is section eight, the consent agenda. Is anyone willing to make a recommendation to pass our consent agenda, including items eight, A through E? So, thanks Patty. Is there a second?
One second, yeah.
Thank you, Brian. All those in favor of passing the consent agenda?
I have a question on the coaching and the turnaround strategy. I noticed that Cory, no, not Cory, Cry Becky, is on both middle school girls' and boys' basketball, so are they in search of, I just think we should ask, in search of?
Oh boy, I don't know.
He's on both.
I wondered if they were different timelines.
They don't run at the same time.
It still seemed unusual, because they practice, and that would be a long night for them. Maybe that is what is intended.
Well, the boys' basketball is done by Christmas time, and the girls' basketball starts after Christmas time.
Oh, it's a split season. One after another. That makes sense.
And then, how did we get that donation for chemistry? That's wonderful. Did somebody think that out? Or did someone just say, hey, we will? Or he lives here and works self-across?
Potentially an internal, an internal person working there.
Oh, that's wonderful. There were a couple of English mistakes in the minutes, but I didn't go through and highlight them all. No, I'm not stupid. And I, it was a good lesson this time. What we think we said isn't necessarily what somebody heard, so I'm good with it. I guess that's one reason why when I was like clerk for the town, it really was, the guidance we received was, you leave the motions, because interpretation plays into what person is taking them in. And I definitely noticed that in this, because it wasn't what I thought I had said. But that's how it was heard.
That's the opportunity to rebut something.
Is there anything you'd like to?
I bet it's our.
No, because it's, it would be my saying, she interpreted it differently. And I, it's not a big enough issue that I'm gonna say something with it, but I do think the less in-the-minutes of what someone said and the more fact, this is the motion that was made with that. I really do.
We'll have the opportunity to, I think, look at that process closely with our goal, because one of the parts of our goal is using the WASB evaluation tool, meeting evaluation tool, and reviewing our agenda policy and how that is implemented. And potentially, the administrative guy ends up along with it, too. So, we've had that discussion as a board since I've been on the board. And we do have video recordings of our meetings now. So we potentially can look at that process further through our goal and choose to update that practice if we want. Any other questions or discussion on items on the consent agenda? All those in favor of approving the consent agenda items A through E as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
All those against, please say nay. And the motion passes unanimously, six to zero. Now, we're on to item nine, general information. Anything?
I got two things. Number one, the Lakeview Foundation had their big fundraiser a couple weeks ago. They raised $150,000 that night, and it was all for mental health on this side of the river. So it was to help with their schools, to help with the hospitals here in St. Clair County. So that was really a really good fundraiser. And I know New Richmond has already taken advantage of that with a project that we're doing on December 4th with mental health. Number two, Top Secret Project is coming to Somerset. That will be here on the 28th of March. So that's gonna be a big collaboration between the school district, St. Clair County, and we're hoping to get the Chamber of Commerce involved in that, starting with a community supper, and then doing, Chief Savak is gonna get in, in touch with a couple other police departments about bringing the in plain sight, bringing in the secret bedroom thing. And then Hazelton is gonna be coming and doing a presentation on high-tech parenting, and then also a drug presentation. So.
What's it called again?
Top, the Top Secret Project. So Shannon and I will be meeting next week and talking about that. And then, final thing is the AP art group partnered with the medical examiner's office. And Becky and Brandon Berry brought students down to our office. And we talked about empathy and trauma-informed care, and the kids are, have all, already created artwork for our office, where we have meet with families. And they're gonna be showing their artwork at the December 5th board meeting, so during their end report. So it was really interesting. The kids really, really, I've got some copies of their pictures, if you wanna see what their, the work, artwork that they've done. But now, there's a couple other schools that now wanna get involved, because it's AP art, so they get credit for it, and it's meaningful work that they can do their projects with. So it's, it's pretty exciting for, for us.
Is it something where we can get some, you know, print some of those pictures or make it here, too? Because it would seem like that would be a.
Certainly. I mean, the artwork that they created, you know, when, just talking about what they, who was gonna be seeing it, is, is beautiful. It's beautiful. I got pictures. So, so that's pretty exciting. And that, there will be December 5th.
Does the work session, December 4th?
December 4th, I won't be here.
So are they coming to a board meeting?
No, they're gonna be at a county board meeting.
Oh, county board meeting.
Yeah, they're presenting at the county board, making their, their artwork. So, it's, well, it's a, board wants to see who these artists are. So, it's exciting.
Yes, it is.
Very exciting. Any other general information?
Oh, these guys did such a great job.
Thank you very much.
You stayed all the evening.
Um, Mark will have some information coming out to the board, too, about the potential for a district December social.
There were two dates, the 14th.
September 14th and probably up for a little later, one, we'll see.
All right, so item 10 is adjournment. Is anyone willing to make a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Thank you Katie, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you Marie. All those in favor of adjourning, please say aye.
Aye.
All those against, motion passes unanimously, six to zero, and we are adjourned at 8:30 PM.